Good evening and welcome to the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, May 21st, 2015. And we have a show for you. We got it over there, too. You guys forget.
It's that time of year where everything seems to be happening simultaneously. In the past month, North Penn's school district held a community forum on fair funding in Pennsylvania schools. The forum led by Superintendent Kurt Dietrich included community and online feedback and an in-depth, honest discussion on funding with PA State Representatives Kate Harper, Bob Godschal, and Todd Stevens. In the weeks leading up to prom, seniors participated in our annual DUI reenactment with local emergency responders, heard the very personal stories of two mothers whose sons were affected by destructive decisions. One mother spoke about the loss of a son to a drunk driver at senior week while the other speaker was the mother of the student who was driving that car. The North Penn High School Theater presented their production of Titanic: The Musical in late April. Audiences were moved by the powerful performances of the students in this high school musical that sounded, looked, and performed like a Broadway production. The class of 2015 kicked off the first of the senior events this spring with the North Penn High School Senior Prom held at Drexel Brook Ballroom. Nearly 1,000 students converged on Drexel Brook for a night of dancing, great food, and great friends. NPTV was on hand to cover all of the pageantry of the receiving line, to check out all the styles and all the unique rides. Watch our prom show hosted by Amy Young and Kevin Monero this Friday at 9:00 PM. North Penn baseball seniors took a moment to recognize those teachers who have been an inspiration to them during their kindergarten through 12th grade years. And finally, all elementary schools have been hosting their Olympic days over the past few weeks. Here's a few aerial shots from today at Culp Elementary School. That's it for this North Penn news update. Have a great evening.
We have a drone now. Our camera drone.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we kick off tonight, first we'd like to say welcome to everyone who's here and announce that the board did meet in executive session tonight, May 21st, 2015, from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation. We're going to move forward with our favorite part of most of our meetings when it comes to our monthly meeting, and that is the recognition and proclamation point. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are pleased this evening to recognize members of the Pembroke Middle School Jazz Ensemble, and with us this evening, we have those students and Peter New.
Excuse me, everybody. And if you don't know me, my name is Peter New, and I am one of the touring staff band directors at Pembroke Middle School. And I'm going to present to you this evening one of the most incredible groups of students you'll ever meet. These are the 7th and 8th, 8th and 9th grade members of our jazz ensemble. They auditioned for this group back in September and October. They've been rehearsing together and performing together throughout the year. We finished our last big concert last night in Opera Gwinnett Park. Beautiful night and an incredible concert. But most importantly, why we're here this evening. Every two years, the Pennsylvania, or the National Music Educators Association holds a convention, and they select the best of the best of all areas of music education from elementary through college in all aspects, choir, band, orchestra, and jazz. And we submitted a recording of this group to that association. It's a blind audition that goes through several levels of committee. The people listen to it, they're told only this is a middle school band from somewhere. And after several levels of audition, they selected one middle school jazz band, and that is this group of students standing here before you. And as a result of that, they received an invitation to perform at the National Convention in Providence, Rhode Island. They went up on April 10th, did an overnight trip, did an incredible performance, and did some sightseeing in that area, and saw some other concerts up there that were absolutely amazing as well. I'm also going to tell you just the 9th grade class that we have in this group that are about to go on to the high school. Two years ago, they performed at this same convention up in Hartford, Connecticut, and last year, they performed, and many of our students, the 8th and 9th graders, performed at the State Music Educators Convention in Hershey, Pennsylvania. So incredible legacy with the 9th graders as they move on to the high school, and just an amazing year for this group of students. So we're incredibly proud of them and their accomplishments, both locally. They've been traveling around southeastern Pennsylvania to jazz festivals and receiving just the highest ratings you can get, numerous soloist awards, numerous section awards, and just outstanding performance throughout the year. So they have represented North Penn well, both in our area and at the national level well, and we couldn't be prouder of them. So Pembroke Middle School Jazz Ensemble, I'm going to read their names for you. There are three students who are not with us this evening, and I will let you know which ones they are. Okay? Beginning with our saxophone section, Jessica Liu. Julie Kratz. Emily Liu. Alyssa Silvarian. Not with us this evening but also on saxophone is Alex Mercer. Here tonight is Dan Paul, saxophone. Cole Overton. Julian McNaul. Eric Cull. In our trumpet section, Nick New. Not here this evening but also on trumpet, Matthew Potts. Here tonight, Billy Wermuth. Cheyenne Kravner. Thomas Lloyd. Nick Bailey. In our trombone section, Grace Lewis. Allison Maxwell. Noel Abraham. Colin Bates. And Luke Fogel. Not with us tonight but on flute is Katie Har. And now our rhythm section on guitar, Scott Schwartz. On piano, Alex Zo. On piano, Stephanie Zhang. On vibraphone, Hannah Rothman. And our percussion section, Alexa Claffey. Claire Sprang. Ankeet Patel. And Ryan McNamara. Pembroke Middle School 7th, 8th, and 9th Grade Jazz Ensemble.
As it's our custom to let the board administration and board congratulate each and every one of you, would you please come through? Peter, would you join with me?
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
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 you can see it again tomorrow at 7:30 on Channel 28 Comcast and Fios 29, also Monday and Tuesday at 12:30 and 7:30, and again on Wednesday at 12:30 so you get a chance to see it again. So feel free to join them if you wish to.
We are also pleased this evening to recognize members of the North Penn High School Academic Decathlon Team, and with us this evening, we have Nancy Craig.
These are the serious players.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Craig, and I'm a teacher at North Penn High School as well as the Academic Decathlon coach for the last couple of years. Academic Decathlon is a club at North Penn High School. We run it after school, and students basically study and do everything that they accomplish on their own time. When we go to competitions, I want to point out that many of the schools that we go, that we compete against around Pennsylvania and the country actually have it as a class that is there every day. So we're up against some really tough competition, and I'm really proud of how dedicated my team is. This is the third year in a row that our team has been state champion. We're very pleased to, three-peat as we call it. Academic Decathlon is a decathlon. They basically compete against other teams in 10 different events: science, social studies, math, economics, art, music, interview, speech, and essay. Thank you. This year at our states, we were privileged to be first, but we also brought home 34 medals. Out of our group here, four of the nine high scorers in the state were from North Penn High School, and there were... And there was, there was no other school from Pennsylvania that had that many in the all-state high-scoring team. We were the first. Only one team qualifies to go to Nationals, and we did win, and we were privileged to go to Nationals, which was held out in Garden Grove, California, which is right outside of Anaheim. And there, we managed to place 7th in the large school division, and we also placed 13th overall in the country. And there were seven national medals that we brought home. There were three medals in math. We actually did a sweep. There was a gold medal, there was a silver, and a bronze. We also had medals in economics, in essay, in interview, and in speech. Did I get them all? Very good. I would like to introduce to you the team because this truly is a team. We could not have won states without every one of these young ladies and gentlemen bringing home medals. In fact, they were all medalists. In our honors division, Jerry Zhao, who won the silver at Nationals in math.
What does she do?
Serena Zhang, who won a bronze in math, as well as a bronze in economics and speech. Okay.
Speech and economics.
Yang Yu, who brought a gold in math. Noah Lam, who was our high scorer at states in the Scholastic Division. Christian Marquini, another in the Scholastic Division. Parth Nigam, also in our Scholastic Division. Oscar Armus Louis, who at Nationals got bronze in interview and essay.
Essay.
Chris Seibel, one of our varsity. And Kathleen Bogart, who is also a member of our varsity but could not be here this evening.
It is our, it's an opportunity for all of us in the central administration and the board to congratulate each and every one of you as you come through, and Nancy, would you please join them? But before you do that, do you guys have a place? First of all, do you get to keep your awards? Is there a place to put them on display at the school for perpetuity?
Right now, they're in my room, and there's many of them in my room right now.
We would like to make that motion under other business tonight to make sure that we afford you the opportunity of one of those fabulous displays so that you can put your stuff up and bring someday your kids back to see your stuff. So we're going to do that tonight.
Okay.
So please, come through so we can all congratulate each and every one of you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
I asked a couple of them as they come through. That's important. I like to do that. Well, you know what? When they, I'll tell you what we will do. We will publish the newspaper list for graduation in another week or so, and we're going to make sure it's on the website.
We also this evening would like to, excuse me, we would like to recognize students for their outstanding writing, and with us this evening, we have Janet Kratz.
Hi, nice to be here this evening with two of the four students who are being recognized. I teach 11th grade AP English at the high school, and I'd like to tell you about two and a few other writing contests that students have won, have won awards for this year. The first is the Penn State Essay Writing Contest. It's conducted annually. It is done on the spot. Students are timed. They're generally given an argument. The essays are shipped out, and Penn State staff then evaluate them and let us know how they did. And Dominique Mosley, who is currently singing in the choral concert at the high school right now, otherwise she would be here, placed with an honorable mention, making her one of, one of the top seven writers in the state. So Dominique did quite well, and also to her credit, and I'm a firm believer as a teacher of writing, that the best creative writers are analytical, and the best analytical writers have a strong creative flair. And every student here tonight is a testament to that fact, that duality. And Dominique also won at the AAUW Creative Writing Contest, an award for a poem she wrote this year. So whether it's argument or poetry, she can do it all. So Dominique's the first, the first to win, winner tonight. The second is Kate Nab, who is standing here now. And Kate and, and three other students won the National Council of the Teachers of English Writing Contest. If you put, and this happens all the time, 45 anonymous essays in a stack, I know Kate because there's something about her voice that's unique, and the judges knew her as well. So what was exciting about this contest is that there were over 650 students who competed nationally. Pennsylvania garnered seven awards, and North Penn had three of the seven. So I was pretty proud of that, and Kate is our first winner. Second winner who's here tonight is Amanda Lee, and again, Amanda is another student who does it all. She won the AAUW Creative Writing Contest this year and last, and I am told by her very proud Latin teacher that at the National Latin Exam, which is given to about 15 schools regionally, public, private, parochial, she placed summa cum laude in 10th and 11th grade with the highest score both years in the entire region. So that is my very strong shout-out to Latin because Latin always gives me excellent students. So again, congratulations to both of them. And the last award winner is a student of Ellen McKee, and her name is Johnny Burgess. She too is singing tonight, but Ellen wanted me to share with you that she's a very committed writer and hopes one day to publish young adult fiction. So Johnny Burgess is another name to commit to mind. So if you want to, I guess, head forward.
As an opportunity, guys, come on through so we can all congratulate each and every one of you. And... Congratulations. What school? Congratulations. What school? Okay, man. Semper Ruby Suburb. No, I meant College. Do you have any ideas? There you go. Congratulations. She passed the test. Congratulations for this.
Well done. Thank you.
Another round of applause, please. Semper Ruby Suburb. Who are these? Give it to Christine. It's the best time of year, isn't it?
I feel like going back to school.
Yeah.
I don't think we'd see you up here, Mr. Selma, will we?
All right, we're going to move forward with our agenda, and as always, this is our time for Audience of Citizens, and anybody wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and sign our Audience of Citizen logbook.
I've already signed that ahead, so I've taken care of that.
Well, state your name for everybody.
Yes, thank you so much. My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. I've been a resident of the district for about 23 years and have watched in wonderment about the incredible work that the district is doing. And what an amazing collage of achievements: music, academics. I mean, you know, it's like going to the Phillies and they have 15 grand slam home runs. I mean, it is, it is amazing. I think the public really, it isn't informed as much as they should be of, if they had seen this, you know, I would pay my taxes joyfully to Patty Gallagher, you know. But anyway. Good evening, and my thanks to all who served the district so diligently, who sacrificed their time and energy. This is not an easy job, and unlike other political positions, you receive no compensation, so it must be a pure act of love to do this. No matter our personal opinions, we all come together for the common cause: to shape the future so that those who attend our schools are able to reach their full potential. We have gone to the polls to select candidates in this primary election. I was a little disappointed. We had about 2,900 people, and through the cross-filing or whatever it is, I see that the, that the largest number of votes was about 2,900 by, I believe it was the woman from Hatfield. And to select the candidates who will help us achieve our goals that are contained in our vision for the district: improvements done with rigorous due diligence, professional execution, while mindful of the sacrifices of the taxpayers. Now, I watched with interesting, just an observer, and I said, it's really nice when I see all these people just put these little signs out. I never received anything of what the, what the posture of the candidates was going to be. I never heard any dialogue. It would have been nice, but I guess time is, you know, not that easily, you know, gathered to make those positions known. And I am older, and I'm probably older than 90% of the people on this board, so I pulled this wagon a pretty long time. And, you know, I come from a position which I'm supportive of the people that are over 65, and I know from what I talk to people, you know, they are, they are kind of put upon, and this is why Todd Stevens and some of the representatives are mindful of this, and they're probably going to pass something where the property taxes go down by a certain percentage, but also the state taxes will go up. So that the money that's being sent, more of that will come from Harrisburg and less by the taxing authority of this district. So you're going to find that pretty challenging, and I think more power is, is going to be going to Harrisburg, so we have to work that out. I come to remind you how long my group has paid to support the district, year after year, and there is a little grumbling because once you reach a certain age and your income doesn't grow anymore and you have certain expenses, that they, they do press upon people. And I want everybody on this board, if you're going to run or stand for reelection, or if you're going to continue on until your expiration is, I want you to be mindful. Every dollar that you take in has to be spent after rigorous examination, due diligence, and is this going to be worthwhile moving toward that vision which we all have for the district? It's very, very important, and the public wants to know, is this really happening? Okay? I wonder at times in the election process how some candidates can feel good about cross-filing. What exactly are your goals? Are you Republican? Are you Democrat? What exactly are you? And I know the state, you can do this. But I said, I'm an independent, and I would certainly run as an independent, and I wouldn't change my posture because I'm an independent, I'm a rigorous conservative, and I believe that taxpayers' money, each dollar spent, has to be spent in the most important way advancing toward the vision. We can't take any side trips because I know that we'll probably have to go and remodel the high school, probably for 50 or 60 million dollars. I think that that's coming up. I could be wrong. So at some point, we're going to have the pensions going up. We don't have the privilege to do that because we need to have a balanced budget, and we have the constraints of Act One. Okay? I'll be finished. I'm a proud conservative, budget-conscious person. $240 million is our budget. We're working on it four years, it's a billion dollars. That's an awful lot of money, awful lot of money for 12,000 kids. I know we need to spend it. But in the perspective of the taxpayers, that is a lot of money being entrusted to the district, and we have challenges coming up. I hope you're mindful of what's coming up, not what's current. I pointed out the situation with the buses. $14 million for transportation. The student population has grown incrementally. It's so small, I can't even imagine how small it is, maybe 60 kids. Okay? I don't want to see this budget going up anymore. I want that route changed. I want efficiency in transportation, and I want an improvement in what happened. We spent 14 million. I want 14 million. I don't care what happens. You need to stick to that $14 million. It's a lot of money, a billion dollars in four years. I hope the public knows what each candidate for the election stands for, and they make a judicious decision when they cast that ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, we're going to move forward. Recommend approval of the minutes of the April 16, 2015, action meeting and the May 12, 2015, special action meeting as circulated.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. I'm going to move forward with committee reports, and I'm going to start with Finance, Walter Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, May 21, 2015. I'm sorry, this is update from the meeting, May 4, 2015. The financial reports were reviewed with additional discussion on the reports as noted. Revenues, expenses, and balance sheet report. The end-of-year projected balances were reviewed. 2014 to 2015 revenues are still projected to exceed budgeted revenues by approximately $1.2 million, and expenditures are projected to come in under budget by approximately $700,000. The EIT report, earned income tax collection, continued to be strong for the year. EIT collection would exceed budget by at least $1 million for the year. Enterprise Fund Statement Report. The Extended Care Program and School Nutrition Services Program are both showing very strong financial performances for the year. Short-term Capital Projects Cash Flow Forecast Report. With the projects in the pipeline, there remains a balance of approximately $1 million available for future projects. Budgetary Reserve Report. The Business Office transferred $231,000 into the reserve due to the savings from the North Monco Technical High School bond refinancing. Private School Transportation Contract. The updated proposal received from First Student was reviewed. The committee recommended a three-year contract with options for a fourth and fifth year and the district to pay for the fuel. 2015-16 Budget Update. Mr. Scrocky provided an update on the proposal for the, let's try that one more time. Updated on the proposal final budget figures. The state subsidies and the Retirement Stabilization Rate Fund were discussed. The proposed final budget must be approved at the May 12 work session in order to allow for a 30-day public inspection prior to the June 18 budget adoption at the action meeting. 2015-16 North Monco Technical Career Center Budget. Mr. Scrocky reviewed the budget and enrollment information. North Penn's portion of the budget increased by 1.4% or $38,000. Items Recommended for Work Session and Action Meeting. The 2015-16 Proposed Final Budget approved at the May 12 work session. The budgeted transfers on tonight's agenda for approval. Private School Transportation Contract, also on tonight's agenda for approval. And the North Monco Technical Career Center Budget, also on the agenda for tonight's approval. The next meeting will be held Tuesday, May 26, at 6:30 PM. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of Finance? Quite a long report tonight. Is it possible that we can get a copy of the report that you issued tonight? And also, when you brought forward the First Student contract options?
Yes.
Was that a straight contract or was that competitively bid? What did we do to come up with that?
It was a negotiated contract with First Student.
For professional services?
Correct.
Is that what it's considered?
Correct.
Okay. I've made no bones about it. I think the drivers for First Student are excellent. I think that they're a high-quality group of people. I don't like their management. When we've had troubles in the past with transportation issues, they haven't been the greatest people for us. But they successfully executed contracts and done the services that we requested. So. Any questions of Finance? I'm going to move forward with Safe Schools, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The Safe Schools Committee has not met since the last board meeting, so please take note. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for 6 o'clock, Monday, June 8, at the Educational Services Center, and this will be before the ECP meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Safe Schools? Is it possible to get a list of dates for the next meetings in advance? I have a conflict on that night, and so when I saw the date, I wasn't asked, so I didn't get a chance to say. I only have three conflicts in June, and that's one of them. So I can't get out of it. But for the future, if we can get some dates, that's why I don't have to miss it. All right, thank you. Personnel, Mr. Kerr.
Personnel Committee met in executive session May 5, from 5 to 6 PM, to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation.
Thank you. Support Services, Mr. Schilling.
Yes, Mr. Shapinski. Support Service Committee met on Monday, April 27, and we discussed the following. The committee was provided an update of the Hatfield Elementary renovation addition projects. The project is progressing well, with interior finishes being installed in the building. The project is scheduled for completion this summer in preparation for the 2015-2016 school year. Also, an upgrade of the summer projects was provided to the committee. The projects being performed this summer include secured entrances to six elementary schools, restoring Penn Fields modular classrooms after the temporary modular classrooms are removed, and replacement or restoration of five building roofs. Mr. Schutner also presented a change order for the Penn Field Module Classroom Installation Project to, for additional work for the completion of the project. This change order is on this evening's agenda for your consideration. And also, a shared service concept between Lansdale Borough and North Penn School District was discussed with the committee requesting that the administration compile a list of services that could be provided along with estimated potential revenue that could be expected as a result of the agreement. Our next meeting of this committee was scheduled for next Tuesday, May 26, here at ESC, at 6 o'clock. End of report. Thank you.
Any questions of Support Services this evening? Yeah, what's the shared services thing?
We would go in and do certain things for the building, to the building, like take care of it, because they felt that our maintenance people would have a better, how could I say, we're better equipped to deal with that type of thing than they are. And thus, they would like trade off, let's say, certain things regarding asphalt or pothole. I mean, it wasn't really specific. We asked for more clarification. We weren't, certain people had mixed emotions about it, but they didn't really go into much detail. So that, we were basically talking about how we could, you know, meet some of their needs, and in turn, they would meet some of our needs. And also, they would compensate us for certain things. If we had a janitor go in and clean the building, then that person would be compensated. So it wasn't spelled out, you know, in great detail. So we wanted more detail. We just didn't shut it down. Certain people wanted more information, so I said, you know, sure, we'll look at it. But, you know, no decisions were recommended or made.
Is that right? Did I cover it? Is it going to be similar to the kind of agreement we have with the parochial schools when we do their food services supports and things like that? Because they don't have the kind of background and equipment to do that.
I would think so. Would you say? I'll let Tom comment on it. Or Mr. Snyder.
Not to that level.
Oh, turn your mic on.
It was blinking green. Yeah, we would basically, the discussions surrounded us doing some preventative maintenance in their new complex, and then they would pay us hourly wage and also parts for any work that's done there. They would also, we would also look at the management of their facility staff. They would have one facility person there, so there'd be a management fee. Very broad discussions at this point, nothing real specific. We haven't had an opportunity to meet with them, I guess, for about a month and a half now. So we're trying to schedule a date to get more detail and bring more forward to the Support Services.
We've had the opportunity in the past to have cooperative agreements without other agencies inside of North Penn. The parochial schools was one for food services because they, you know, the cost of equipment and people and preparation is kind of cost prohibitive for smaller schools, but it's not for us, as a large district. So we did some very nice things and worked with the parochial schools to come up with the savings for them in a way that we can increase our revenue. So it helped us too, purchasing power because we were buying more things and doing more things for it, so it saved us some. It was a great agreement, so I'm more than happy to listen to that kind of proposition and see what could come forward for us.
Sure.
Because we like to cooperate. The other thing is, I wanted to ask you, the update on Hatfield Elementary. Since we're going to be operational in the fall, is it possible to arrange for a tour of the facilities during the summer after we graduate North Penn and have the time that we can come out and set it up to take a tour?
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I've had an opportunity to go into a couple of things when Mr. Schilling took me there.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great idea.
But I'd like to see the progress. Because I know that you've done, you've finished some areas already.
Absolutely.
So it'd be nice. And if you guys want to, I'm telling you, it's the greatest thing to see.
Right, and also, we want to, you know.
Yeah, their original plan is to go online this fall.
Yes, absolutely. And of course, we want to go through during a time where, you know, it's safe for everybody and there's no issues of, you know, someone, you know, so.
Just tell the guys.
Right. You know what I'm saying? You know what I mean? I just, you know, I think that that's fair to say, that we want to go through where it's, you know, you can see a lot of things.
The other thing, I didn't catch it in your report, I wanted to get an update, since I wasn't, I didn't get a chance to attend your meeting, was how are the renovations projects going forward with Montgomery Elementary? I know that you're spearheading that.
Yeah, we're actually, they're working on that right now, and we were, I was, we were talking to Pete, and we should have something come forward more specific, I would guess, right? Next weekend, I think, Tuesday.
We're preparing to get some bids out? Is that what we're doing?
Oh, no, not yet. For Montgomery.
We just, yeah. Plan of plans?
For Montgomery Elementary, we are, we're putting together a presentation for Tuesday evening, which would include project estimates and the scopes, you know, schematic scope of work.
Okay.
Yeah. See, last time, we really didn't have enough time to study the information, and when, you know, then we went, we felt that we had to delay it until this Tuesday. So I think a lot of us are more informed and know where we're going to go, which direction we're going.
I appreciate your efforts on that one.
No problem.
Thank you. All right, ECP, Mrs. Charnock.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The ECP Committee meeting was held on Monday, May 11. During the meeting, the committee received information and updates regarding three programs. This summer, Literacy Intervention Program to improve reading and writing skills will be conducted at Oak Park Elementary School for students in kindergarten through third grade. Concurrent with this program will be a free meal program at Oak Park that will provide breakfast, snack, and lunch to students attending the Literacy Intervention Program. These meals and a snack will also be served at other locations throughout the district to community members. Funding for the meal program is provided by a federal grant. Since November 2008, the RTII framework has been employed in the district's elementary schools to improve literacy achievement for all students. RTII provides effective research-based strategies, differentiated instruction aligned with student learning needs, and varied resources to support, excuse me, this instruction. In order to assess the fidelity of the program, an audit of the program was conducted by Dr. Edward Shapiro at Lehigh University. In his report, Dr. Shapiro stated that the RTII program at North Penn is a mature program in which many of the school staff members believe and to which they are committed. Another comment from Dr. Shapiro was that the K-3 model was functioning very well, but additional support may be needed for the programs in grades four through six. Other recommendations included refining the model, providing more training for parents, and additional professional development for four through sixth-grade staff, and reviewing the assessments being used. Also at the meeting, the committee received an update regarding the governor's Expanding Excellence Competitive Mentor Grant. This grant was awarded to the high school because of successful Keystone Biology exam results. Funding from the grant enables North Penn High School to partner with Fleetwood High School to share best practices and provide mentoring. Also, as a result of the grant, science teachers at the high school are able to meet to review the biology curriculum to better align it with the Keystone content, share best practices, and develop and/or revise instructional materials and assessments. In addition, an AP Boot Camp will be conducted this summer at the high school. The purpose of this week-long enrichment program will be to help students who are taking advanced placement courses for the first time to better prepare for success in those courses. The next meeting of the ECP Committee is June 8, 2015, at, excuse me, 6:30 PM. End of report.
Any questions for ECP tonight? North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. The foundation recently held its second annual online auction, and wow, what a great success it was. More than $8,700 was raised through this event. This is more than double what we made last year. The auction featured one-of-a-kind North Penn experiences like front row seats at graduation, a birthday party at the NPHS Planetarium, and lunch with your principal. New this year, we also added valuable and fun items like show tickets, nights out in Philly, lottery baskets, and a luxurious vacation stay. I want to thank everyone who participated in the auction. This includes all bidders, those who won, and those who unfortunately were outbid but who helped drive up our prices. And in particular, thank you to the local and regional businesses who donated their products and goods, and to the individuals who donated personal items as well. In fact, it was a York Avenue teacher who donated the luxurious vacation stay. This alone brought in $1,500. Our next big event is the 14th Annual Gothic, which will take place on August 17. I know, John, you usually go. We are looking for golfers and sponsors for this popular event, which last year brought in more than $20,000. So I hope that you'll all put it in your calendar now. Term all the foundation's Grant Review Committee will review 43 requests for the 2015-2016 school year submitted by NPH's North Penn School District staff. Funds raised this year, including the auction, will help support the selected programs. In early June, there is an opportunity to see the firsthand types of learning experiences the foundation supports. On Wednesday, June 3, at 7 o'clock, in the North Penn High School Audion, engineering and nanotechnology students will present some of their work from the past year, much of which has been supported through foundation funding. Throughout the evening, you will see innovative ways that the students designed and ran experiments using some of the latest published research focused on energy, the environment, and healthcare. The students have had the opportunity to be innovative in their approaches to problem-solving, experimental design, and research by applying STEM principles to address some of our most pressing global challenges. Following the first half of the presentation in the audion, there will be a poster session in the auxiliary gymnasium for questions and answers, demonstrations of their research, and a scanning electron microscope demonstration from Anxtrum Scientific, and much more. This is just, you know, what is so amazing is that tonight, we saw the music. We saw, you know, we saw, you know, with the program that we had at the high school a few weeks ago. But this is just amazing. This part of our academic program is so unbelievable, and I hope that you will come. Please stop by if you have the chance. Any questions about the evening or the foundation can be directed to Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Any questions for North Penn Education Foundation? For those of you who don't have the history on the school board to know, that when we approved the academy program for engineering, we got a lot of grief. People didn't want to do it. Oh, people came to the audience, stood at the audience, said they think it's foolish that we should focus on academics and not engineering, the academies, and look at all the great things that have happened since then. It's been, you know, there's a need for a wide diversity of things for kids to do because not everybody does the same things. And it worked out really great, so I'm very happy to read that. That's right.
My son started out in the Communication Academy. He's 30 years old now and a teacher in Communications, so we have a lot to be grateful for for North Penn, too. Thank you.
Very successful program. All right, North Monco Technical Career Center, who's got this one?
Me.
You're up.
We, I don't have a report, but we seem to have this problem every month, so maybe if you don't mind, starting next month, I would be happy to give the report at those meetings.
Oh, I don't, I mean, it was a relatively uneventful meeting. It was Monday, and really, there wasn't a whole lot there.
You brought a check back with you from refinance.
Well, I didn't want to bring that back, but that's a different issue because we have a roof that needs to be repaired over there, and I was hoping that I could talk everybody to just let it, let the money that we save sit and.
We only have one-fifth of a roof, don't we?
Well, we have a roof that needs to be repaired over there, period.
Everybody's giving back the money for the roof.
So, yeah, so I figured.
Did we agree to that? Do we need to vote on that? Do you guys want to just vote?
It'll, no, it'll happen later.
Okay.
Well, we got to.
We're trying to be practical, but it doesn't necessarily work that. I absolutely agree with it, because you know what's going to happen. They're going to give you the $300,000, and they're going to answer $400,000 to fix the roof.
We've received a lengthy dissertation on health insurance plans as well.
Well, there's contract, right? There's contract negotiations going on. And they're also, they're looking at a five-year contract, so hopefully they'll get it.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for North Monco? Triple reports. Way it goes. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy, you're up.
The Montgomery County, I should turn this on. The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit met on April 22 in its new facility on Fayette Street in Norristown, and two days later, on April 24, the IU celebrated the dedication of the new IU building. It was certainly a festivocation, and thank you for the North Penn people who came to support it. The board spent the evening ratifying, not at the party, this is going on to the board meeting. The board spent the evening ratifying agreements, adding staff, and preparing for the 15-16 summer programs and school year. Most importantly, the IU board approved the position descriptions, and this is something that's very new at the IU. They have had a whole change of plan of how we're doing things, and they're adding people as program administrators for instructional technology, literacy, math, science, engineering technology, STEM, training and consulting, and related services. Of the many ratified, of the many things ratified of interest to us is a technology services It was certainly a festivacation and thank you for the North Penn people who came to support it. The board spent the evening ratifying, not at the party, this is going on to the board meeting, the board spent the evening ratifying agreements, adding staff, and preparing for the 15-16 summer programs and school year. Most importantly, the IU board approved the position descriptions, and this is something that's very new at the IU. They have had a whole, a whole change of plan of how we're doing things, and they're adding people as program administrators for instructional technology, literacy, math science, engineering technology, STEM, training and consulting, and related services. Of the many ratified, of the many things ratified of interest to us is a technology services agreement to upgrade our discovery education streaming to plus services. Also, acceptance of the fixed rate discount bids for Montgomery County school entities' joint purchasing board. The next, MC IU board meeting is May 27th, on 2015, respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy. And Steve, I want, because I don't even know this, are we using their pricing to help us? Do we use the IU for some things or... Because I know, as I said, this was one of the parts of the discussion at the board meeting.
Yeah, we're constantly partnering with the IU in order to take advantage of competitive pricing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the IU tonight? All right, we're going to move forward with our superintendent report. Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommend approval of an expulsion for student 0521151, whose name is on file in the office of the superintendent. Student parents guardians have waived their rights to an expulsion hearing.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Recommend approval of agreements for tuition in lieu of free and appropriate education for students 052115, 0521152, 0521153, whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Kerr?
Second.
I heard Mr. Solomon first, or second, I'm sorry. Mr. Solomon, second. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of the 2015 summer literacy program to be held at Oak Park Elementary School per item 2515.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? By the way, this is the, one of the nicest literacy programs we run. We've run it, moved it around to schools, different schools during the summer, it's an excellent program. It's never open enough. That's the only problem we've ever had with this. But it's a great program, so. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Recommend approval of the proposed 2015-16 North Penn, excuse me, North Monco Technical Career Center budget. A general fund budget in the amount of $11,321,226, of which North Penn's tuition share is $3,446,353, which is a $38,741 or 1.14% increase. North Penn's debt service share is $187,581, which is a $130,37 or 40.94% reduction. North Penn's total share is $3,633,934, which is $91,296 or 2.45% reduction.
So moved and well-read.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? Are they, are they being affected at all by the enrollment dropping issues? Not really? As a trade school, not really?
There are three, if I recall correctly, and I can't tell you what they are, three programs that are on probation, where they're looking because of numbers. And the VOTech has a policy and a program to look at each particular carpentry, you know, HVAC, those kinds of things, yes. Welding, whatever they have. Carpentry apparently has been one that's been difficult to, to meet the, the projected, you know, the plan for enrollment or hope for enrollment. And so, so again, every year, take a look, see where it's going, where it's at, and what can be done to increase the enrollment, so. It's a regular, regular, you know, look.
And I recognize that over the years, they've done an amazing amount of upgrading on the curriculum to make sure that they stay ahead of most of those things, the biotech stuff.
They lost some ninth graders, right? One of the sending schools, they're not sending ninth...
You know what it is, it's, it's a stigma sometimes that they have to overcome, that, you know, parents think, our kid's got to go to college, I've got to go to college, I've got to go to college, and they don't. And you see that, you know, white collar and blue collar mentality, and they don't realize there's a third category now. When I was on the workforce investment board, it was these professional trades, which were called gold collar jobs, because they were graduating and making more money than college graduates. And it's kind of hard to get parents to say, you're not going to go to a college or a university, you're going to go to this trade school and come out with a skill that's in the super demand, and it's very tough to get them to do that. And I know that's something that the tech schools fought, or, you know, been troubled with for years, so it's nice to see them moving through.
We do. I mean, they, they try to, you know, social media and video and, you know, encourage kids and get out, counselors meet, I believe, with, with the school district regularly, I think, like every month or so, and they share information and... But, but it is, it is difficult, because there still is a stigma. Shouldn't be, but, but there is, because there's a lot of good stuff happening.
If you follow the numbers from the workforce investment boards and you see what the career things are telling you, that's a ridiculous statement, because they are making more than college graduates when they come out of those trades, and they're employed for life.
Look at the, the bill you get from your plumber or your HVAC.
Exactly. So, well done. All right, and again, I'd like to thank the three of you for doing a wonderful job.
Well, I just want to add that there is a college, Penn State sponsors, that offers bachelor's degrees in technologies, automotive services, plumbing, HVAC, and so, the technical school can be a gateway to that, the university, or Penn State University School of Technology as well, so.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Recommend approval of change order number one to Mobile Lease Modular Space Incorporated for the Penfield Middle School modular renovation at a change of contract amount of $17,024 for changes required during installation per item 2715A through B.
She was not, she was not overwhelmed by your statement.
Well, I just kept reading it and didn't bat an eyelash, did you notice?
I was not about the change order. It was about the, almost spill there.
Did you get that on camera? Was that on camera? Oh, darn.
That is a classic. Yeah, that's right.
Well, that's the most exciting, that hurts from that end of the room for a long time.
There's a blooper for North Penn TV. I have a mo, I have a motion and a second.
I don't think you have.
You know, did I get a motion?
Not unless Mrs. Murphy was making the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, was there a second? Mr. Schilling's second. Second, Mr. Schilling, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Different way of making that motion.
That's what I write. I understood what she was doing, that's all.
This is, last month, I had a question about why we had done this after the fact.
The change order?
No, the, the original modulators, the cost of the modulators.
Oh, you mean as a, as a change, but this was a change order to the renovation setups, wasn't it? Something else?
So what is your question?
Well, I'm wondering why we didn't put in the price of this when we originally got the modulators, because now it's costing us even more.
I'm going to address that, Mr. Schneider.
Looks like Hatfield required.
Yeah, a couple of the items on the list were required by the township when we were, during construction. Looking, after they did the inspection, they requested that we add some doorways at midpoint in the, the modulators, because the hallway was so long. So that was one of them. Other items were to encase some wiring. The modulators came in without suspended ceilings, so we had to put in a sopit. So there were just items that were, we came across during the construction, and it took a while for us to negotiate those change orders. The contractor had asked for a much greater amount, so we had to, we worked on them quite a bit, so. These are items that were not part of the original contract.
Right. And that's not that strange, because we've asked, we asked people to come in and, you know, do an inspection, tell us what else they think, because, I mean, we have a pretty good relationship with those building inspectors, and that's what they do. We've asked them to come in, even though they're not required to, we've asked them to come in and take looks at things, and we're going to do the same thing at Hatfield Elementary where we're working on it, so. And obviously, they come through and they give us their opinion, and we honor that usually, so. All right, I have, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Recommend approval of North Penn School District resident tuition-free 40 days, school days maximum, for student 05211538, whose name is on file in the office of the superintendent.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Recommend approval of the standard form of agreement between owner and architect with Bonnet Associates Incorporated for the roof replacement project as listed per item 2815.
Motion by Mr. Solomon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of the employee assistance contract with Penn Foundation, effective July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016, at a total cost of $24,000 per item 2915.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions about the Penn program? They do very well for us when we need them, and it averages out to be less than $400 a person, so it's, it's a pretty good, it is, it's a... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Recommend approval of award of base bid one and four of the roof replacement project at various schools to Winchester Roofing Corporation in the amount of $1,121,800 per item 3115A through B.
Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Off they go.
Recommend rejection of all bids submitted for base bid two and three of the roof replacement project at various schools per item 3215A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to award the roofing replacement for Napp Elementary and Penbrook Middle Schools to Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated, WTI, through the AEPAKPN, which is the Keystone Purchasing Network, state contract per item 3315A through B.
Motion by Mr. Solomon, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I always, I appreciate these people who donate. I really mean it, I, I never want to take it for granted. So, there are all these wonderful people who donated all this, all these things, I just want to say thank you.
Pity. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you.
Recommend approval of bids per item BA5A through H as listed.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Recommend approval of personnel items as listed A through C.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved. Recommend approval of student travel per item BA8.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? I wish them well at Nationals. They are one-eighth of the Pennsylvania team. Very impressive. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion is approved. Recommend approval of contracts per item BA9A through C, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion is approved. Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA10, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Motion by Mr. Kerr.
Second.
Second. Sorry, he beat you. Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion is approved.
That ends our report. We're going to move forward with our finance report. Mr. Soraki, please go forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. This financial report is through the month of April 2015. Cash receipts for the month of April totaled $3,641,012.9. Disbursements for the month of April totaled $15,960,223.43. And at the end of April, we were left with cash and investments totaling $88,598,857.82. End of report.
Thank you. Would you move forward with sanction and approval of invoices?
Recommend ratification and disbursements for the month of April in the amount of $20,652,657.13.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Sanction approval is approved.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the March 2015 budget transfers in the amount of $2,119,395.72 per item BA-11, A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved.
Recommend approval of a contract with First Student for transportation services for the 2015-16, 2016-17, and 2017-18 fiscal years with an option for the 2018-19 fiscal year and the 2019-20 fiscal year. The final contract language will be subject to review and approval by the solicitor. The district will pay for the cost of the fuel for the contracted buses. The cost per bus shall be as follows, per item number 30-15. 2015-16, $239.96. 16-17, $245.96. 2017-18, $252.11. And in the option year of 1819, $258.41. Option year of 1920, $264.87.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Brown. Steve, could you tell me, what's the escalation factor here?
We have an escalation factor, excuse me. First off, for the current year, we would be at a 4% reduction over where we're at right now, so in the 15-16 year, a 4% reduction, and then a 2.5% increase each year, including the option years.
Thank you.
Those are daily rates, correct.
Now, we buy fuel, too, don't we, on a special contract?
Right now, the way the arrangement is, we actually, First Student pays for the fuel, and if the price fluctuates beyond $2.50, then we, per gallon, then we share in the fuel cost beyond that. What our recommendation is, based on our look back, the cost of fuel over the last seven years, is actually a cost advantage for us just to pay 100% of the fuel, which lowered the pricing we receive for the daily rate for each bus.
All right. Well done. And I'd like to thank the finance committee for a well-done operation for that. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion is approved.
Federal, state grants and other programs, Dr. Holman.
This month, I just wanted to give you a quick update. We will be applying for year four of our Keystone's To Opportunity Literacy Grant next week. The allocation for next year is $996,000 approximately, and it's the time of year when we will start working on our consolidated application, which is our Title I, II, and III grants as well. The total preliminary allocation for those is about $1.7 million.
Excellent grant.